Call the order. The meeting, city council meeting for July fifteen, twenty twenty four. Michelle, if you could do roll call, please.
Mayor Schwartz. Member Karen.
Here.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Here.
Member Gates. Member Traver.
Here.
Member Underhill.
Here.
Member Wolfherzberger.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I don't see Bill Cole here, right?
Let's put. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we excuse Mayor Schwartz from tonight's meeting.
Motion from Mr. Karen.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. First up, we have our approval agenda, which include number six, public comment on agenda items, followed by our consent agenda with the city council minutes, city bills, and seven C grant submittal request from the Recreation Department. No number eight tonight, number nine informational items from our city manager, uh, twenty twenty four action plan, second quarter update. Number ten, public hearings, we have four of them. And A being section three point one point one zero before regional commercial district and section three point one point one one freeway services district zoning ordinance amendments, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight. Ten B conditional rezoning request for number twenty four point zero one, that's sixteen thousand five hundred Division Drive. Ten C conditional rezoning request for number twenty four point zero two is one, two, three Exchange Street. Ten D is an Oprah exemption exemption request for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue. We have no old business tonight. Number twelve, reports and recommendations, uh, FOIA fee appeal request from Mr. Glenn Kowalski. There's two of those for twelve A and twelve B. And then no thirteen and the number fourteen, we public comment on non-agenda items.
We believe you're looking at the old agenda. There was a revision made on Friday afternoon.
Okay, the new, the new twelve A. Second Construction Board of Appeals meeting for one oh seven North Fountain Street Dangerous Building. And then twelve B is FOIA fee appeal request from Mr. Glenn Kowalski. And twelve C is another FOIA fee repeal request from Mr. Glenn Kowalski. Uh, by, uh, number fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items. And then filed with number fifteen, council and manager communications before we adjourn.
I'll move approval of the agendas presented.
So moved. Motion support. All in favor, say aye.
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 No, same side. Motion passes. It brings us to six, public comment on agenda items. Please give your name and address when speaking. You have a maximum of three minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Yes.
Rebecca Sebring-Fredonia Township. I object to you tearing our roads apart for an industry that may not even come to this town now, now that they have the cattle information. I really don't want these roads torn apart. I would like my memories in my town to stay small and decent. This is ridiculous. You don't even know if this thing hasn't even come to fruition yet and you want to rip our roads apart and bring all this industry. What if it doesn't come to fruition because of the cattle thing? What if Homeland Security does come after you guys because you've cohered with them? If they did drop it out, then fine. But why must you tear our roads apart and turn it into some big city thing? And then let's say that doesn't go. And what's that forty acres of land? Is that a new park you're putting on that site? You're still gonna tear our roads apart? Why don't you put it off and save yourself some money and see if this thing comes to fruition first before you rip our roads apart?
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Adams?
Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty through West Green Street. Uh, I'll be addressing agenda items twelve B and C. We have a continuing struggle uh, trying to actuate the fullness of our rights to obtain information from our government. Now, there's not supposed to be any withholding or disclosure of information uh, that deals with public business and that is statutorily reflected in MCL seven fifty four ninety two. Uh, we're supposed to be able to get access to any and every document uh, that is in the public record. But the somehow the Freedom of Information Act, which should be more accurately called the Freedom from Information Act, uh, somehow is able to erect a number of different procedural obstacles to prevent people from getting the information that they are entitled to and that they deserve. Uh, and especially when it deals with matters of public significance, uh, they should, the information should be freely given without charge. So as we're seeing here, as we're seeing in Emmett Township and Battle Creek and the county, uh, and Marshall Township, uh, they're using every sort of dog ate my homework type of excuse to prevent uh, releasing significant information that would be beneficial to the citizens at large in their being able to better understand what's going on in local government. So, uh, you know, we already went through this thing with me having to contact the state police and invoking that seven fifty four ninety two and then having Sergeant Beramah call down and so we shouldn't have to go through that nonsense. Uh, there should be an eagerness to want to provide the inquiring citizens with the necessary information that they are going to need in order to make better decisions about the, how they are going to participate in, in local government. Whenever you're using these contrived procedural obstacles to prevent information from getting to the citizenry, we can only view that as bad faith and deliberate attempt at fraud. I'll be back.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Seven A. City council minutes for regular session July first, twenty twenty four, followed by city bills totaling six hundred and fifty one thousand eight hundred and ninety four dollars and thirty nine cents. And then the grant submittal request from the Recreation Department. Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. City clerk, if you could do roll call, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett. Yes. Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfherzberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us down to informational items. Uh, city manager, if you could speak to twenty twenty four action plan, second quarter update.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. City Council's aware in January of twenty twenty four, you adopted the twenty twenty four action plan. As part of that, you identified seventy one goals, projects, plans that you wanted, uh, city to accomplish. And as we committed, we would provide you a quarterly update to that. We are six months through the year, so we are providing that second quarter update for your review. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Of course, it's in the public packet, so the public can view those updates. And then we'll also be placing it on the website. So that's it. Come December, we'll have our final report.
Any questions? For the city manager? Okay, thank you. That moves us along to public hearings. Section ten, ten A is section three point one point one zero before regional commercial districts and section three point one point one one freeway services district zoning ordinance amendments for ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh eight, Mr. Zuzka.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Uh, pardon me. In front of you tonight, you have a proposal ordinance, which would update two sections of our zoning ordinance. The first one, um, in the B four district, we would raise the potential height, maximum height from its current, um, thirty five up to a potential sixty if you are more than five hundred feet away from any residentially zoned parcels, so R one, R two, R three. Um, you have a map in front of you that highlights that on the B four district on the west end of town. So the buffer area, um, the cloud-like area, circle area, is the areas that would, you would not be allowed to go with a higher height. Um, there's another section in, in, in the city that is before, and that's kind of down by True North Dark Horse, not quite to Dark Horse, but in that area. Nothing in there is more, less than five, or more than five hundred feet away, so you wouldn't be able to go the higher heights down there at this point. Um, this would also apply to the FS, the Freeway Services District, which is up by Denny's, the hotel's up there. So that undeveloped hotel site that was approved, this would allow them to go to the higher four stories, which is what they're looking for, um, most hotels are looking for today. Um, so we, we really looked at, planning commission looked at it and said, you know, we want to allow for the development, but we don't want to infringe on our residential, um, properties. They don't want a four-story um, hotel looking down at someone's backyard and a swimming pool. So by looking at the separation and looking at our, our community, we think we've met, um, that requirement. Um, the ordinance also, um, amends the B four district to allow financial institutions with drive-throughs. Um, twice in the last two years, we provided a use variance to allow, um, banks to go in, Consumers Credit Union, which is going to go on the old Pizza Hut site, and the American One Credit Union in Winston Park. We already had Southern Michigan Bank, we already had Huntington, so it, it made perfect sense to the Planning Commission. Well, the ZBA said, hey, planning commission, please fix the ordinance. So after a while, we, um, after when we were set out to do all this work on those zoning ordinance, we were able to achieve that goal. So that's what this, um, proposed ordinance change would do is allow that higher heights in the two districts and then financial institutions with drive-throughs are permitted, used by right. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. This time we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Please give your name and address for the council, and you have three minutes to speak.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, six point two West Green Street. I need to continually remind you of once the source of zoning authority comes. And it is not derived from strictly de jure constitutional authority, but was obtained through a statute which derives its authority from a provision in the Constitution that essentially declares martial rule. The governor shall be commander in chief of the armed forces and may call them out to execute the law, suppress insurrection, and repel invasion. Now, very simple sentence, but it's not a conditional thing. It's the governor shall be commander in chief. So it's not that he or she will be commander in chief if certain conditions exist. It's commander in chief, he or she is. So through these clever machinations in statute, uh, we have degenerated into a system of martial rule. Uh, and the whole point of martial rule is to completely destroy our natural rights and through some sort of sophisticated legalistic device, uh, try to transform those rights into privileges. Now, this is what we're saying with zoning ordinances because, uh, the city government is assuming some sort of superordinate control to be able to tell people how to build or not build, uh, on their own property. Our right to property is one of our most fundamental rights, uh, and, you know, constitutional rights cannot be regulated or converted into privileges. Uh, it's that Article One, Section Three of the Michigan Constitution of eighteen thirty five made it very clear, and I think people back then were trying to tell people down the line that don't fall for this privilege nonsense. Americanism resides in the strong exercise and protection of our natural rights, the three big ones, life, liberty, and property. And through the sophisticated statutory elaboration, somehow those rights have been trickled away and been converted into privileges. This is something that needs to be changed. We need to revert back to the demands of Article eleven, Section one of the Michigan Constitution, which says that we are to uphold and protect the Constitution of both United States and the state of Michigan. I'll be back.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or questions?
I'll, I'll tell you guys, um, between the ZBA and the, and the Planning Commission, uh, I've been involved in a lot of this discussion, um, for a long time. Um, I do feel like the, um, the height restriction, um, is a, is a good compromise, you know, with staying away from the, from the residential areas. Um, you know, there's, um, I, I think it still limits, you know, where these, where this, these building heights can be, uh, attempted. Um, you know, obviously they're still gonna have to go through site plan, they're still gonna have to go through, um, you know, uh, all the review process. So, um, yeah, I, I think, again, this has been discussed in a couple of different boards before it got here. And, um, I think this is a smart compromise. I think it's, it's, it'll choose the city well.
Anyone else? Uh, just for clarification, Mr. Zuzka, the Hampton and Holiday Inn we have on ninety four X one ten, those are within sixty feet?
No, um, the current zoning ordinance only limits height to thirty five feet. There was a variance approved for them.
Okay.
Um, to get the, a little higher.
Okay.
But if they were to build today with this, when this goes into place, they could go up to sixty feet there.
Okay.
Um, is there, I don't believe there's a resident, residence within five hundred feet of those parcels. But just below, just south of those parcels, there's an undeveloped parcel that was a, a site plan was approved for a hotel before I came to the city. Um, but, so if they were to find a buyer, that site could be developed at the sixty foot height.
Okay. Thank you.
Up to sixty foot.
Sorry?
Up to sixty foot height, that.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's great. Um, we need to have these limitations in place, just like we did with Blue Oval. We don't want them building a monstrosity that everybody can see throughout town as well. So there's height restrictions set on everything. All our ordinances and all our parts of town. So I think this is good for the west end of our community and, um, there's gonna see more traffic and it could be a good spot for a potential hotel. So, um, at this point, I'll seek a recommendation to enact ordinance number two zero two four dash zero eight, an ordinance to amend City of Marshall zoning code, chapter three point zero zoning districts, section three point one point one zero before regional commercial district and section three point one point one one freeway services district to repeal any ordinances to conflict thereof and to provide an effective date hereof and publish the ordinance in the full and then local newspaper.
So moved.
Support.
Uh, motion and support. If I could get roll call, clerk, please.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfherzberger.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to ten B conditional rezoning requests for number two four point zero one of sixteen thousand five hundred Division Drive. Director Zuzka could brief us on this one.
In front of you, you have a request for conditional rezoning request at sixteen five hundred, uh, Division Drive. Oh, this is a little different than you're used to in rezoning requests. Uh, this is a conditional rezoning, which the applicant provides conditions that they're willing to offer to the city in return for this rezoning. Um, it's permitted under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Uh, we've done it a couple of times, but I think it was nineteen, two thousand twenty, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, so it's been a little while, and some of you may not remember that. Um, this partial, um, it was originally proposed to be a site, uh, a marijuana, marijuana grown processor. Uh, greeting, that project fell apart. Um, there are other facilities that looked at it for marijuana. It's a very tough site, very little upland, lot of wetland, a very weird shaped partial, too. Um, so from a conditional rezoning standpoint, this is probably one of the more perfect sites, um, because you really can't develop it um, under the I one very easily. You're very small, um, facility there. Um, also where it sits, it's right next to all the township residential, Marshall Township, that's the north side um, of the street. It's all residences through there. Uh, the applicant integral homes has requested the conditional rezoning to MFRP, which is a multifamily residential. Um, but they would limit their development to, to duplexes. So you're not looking at a major apartment, um, complex, which really wouldn't fit on the site. Um, they have offered four conditions as part of this rezoning. There would be limited development to the du, to duplex. Um, they would start building similar to the model elevation floor plans provided, which is in your packet. Ensure a total of nine acres or ninety five percent of the parcel remains undeveloped open space. It's an easy one, mostly like I said, wetland. Um, and provide a buffer of five feet from the emergent wetlands. There was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission about this request, a lot of questions. They were really, I, I think as a whole Plan and Commission, and they voted unanimously to approve it. Um, most of their questions were site plan related. And to remind them, they made a condition, it's a yes or no vote. You, you can't say, well, we like one and, and two, but we don't like three and four. So you, you have the same choice tonight. You either approve as presented or you reject it. Um, staff feels this is the best and highest use of the property. It would be a good transition use from the rural residential to the manufacturing, gives a little buffer for that. And as we know, um, going back to two thousand and sixteen, we have a housing study that says we need housing. Um, prior to any additional development that may come. But, um, so staff highly recommends approval of this rezoning request.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. If anybody would like to wish to speak on this topic. Again, you have state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Bill Barry Wayne Adams, still six point two West Green Street. Uh, what's going on behind all the statutory smoke and mirrors is just a simple attempt at novation, trying to modify or create a, a new contractual relationship with the uh, other contracting body. And that follows with uh, what the Sixth Circuit said in McCune versus Kilpatrick in that a, uh, a civilian, uh, cannot come under the jurisdiction of the military unless it's done by contract. So the whole purpose of the whole statutory scheme, uh, the use of zoning ordinances and the plasticity of these ordinances when it comes down to altering conditions, making a different one, it actually shows that the existing system is not one of lawfulness, but one of lawlessness and any what it could be considered to be a legal standard can be easily changed just by, you know, petitioning to the, uh, superior body. But Article One, Section One, Michigan Constitution, the people are the superior body. And through these devices in, uh, you know, very sophisticated inversion of, uh, powers and rights, uh, now it's the city that has the last say on how people can uh, do with their own property. Now, of course, complications come in when you deal with the legal fiction of the corporation. Uh, and that is one of the functions of the corporation is to provide legitimacy to the alternate personality of the corporate form. Uh, the people are supposed to be a body politic, but if you look at Article seven, it's perversely been converted into bodies corporate and they're very straightforward for the purposes of privileges and immunities. The constitutional government is supposed to operate on rights and responsibilities. Privileges and immunities are something we were never supposed to fall into, going back to their Article One, Section Three of the Michigan Constitution of eighteen thirty five. Corporations are devices, including the municipal corporation, are devices that work in antagonism to the rights of the living and breathing people. I'll be back.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this conditional rezoning request? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Zink. I live at sixteen three three seven Division Drive. And my program, want to talk about the sixteen thousand five hundred Division Drive proposal. Um, I'm more than happy to hear that there's something going in other than a marijuana plant there, believe me. Um, but I'm concerned that, uh, will there be DNR evaluations of that property because it is a marshland? Um, there are, on the north side, which is where I live, there's a marshland that that marsh runs into the marsh on my property. And that, when that marsh fills up, it runs into the marsh that surrounds the property for this Division Drive property, where you're looking for multiple housing. There's only a small quantity of hill property in there that for apparently for building, and they've leveled that off. Will they be extending out into that marsh more? Or is that Highland that there's there now, is that the limitation? I guess I haven't been to these meetings, so I'm not sure where this evaluation of all this is, but I'd be curious to, if I could get in touch with somebody to find this out. Cause I don't want flooding. If they disrupt that land on the south, now the marsh on the, on my property, which I own half of that swamp across the, on the north side. and my two and a half acres there, I don't want that to fill up and I'm losing property on top of it, so.
Before your time's up, is there anything else you want to address?
No, I just.
Um, right now, we're just hearing our public comments. And then after we're done with that, we close the public hearing. Uh, I might have Director Zuzka kind of speak to your questions, see if he can get those answered. If anything's not answered tonight, you can always reach out to City Manager Perry and he will help get those answers for you.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And yes, Director Zuzka, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, as the question of, uh, I believe that's a protected wetland, so they will not be filling that in. Um, that was part of the condition that they made in their rezoning is that they wouldn't be interfering with the current wetland boundaries. Um, our consultants from Spicer Group right now are reviewing the uh stormwater plan and working with Director Davenport. So as part of the site plan uh review, um, they'll have to meet those requirements um prior to any site plan being approved and building started. So uh I believe um his concerns will be met. Uh, and we'll, and I know that is one of the things that Planning Commission kept bringing up was stormwater and how that's going to impact the site. So um member Banfield is very passionate about many things and that was something he kept bringing up, so.
Thank you for that. Council members, any questions or comments?
I was personally pleased to see the nature of the buildings that they're proposing and and that they have restricted themselves to two duplexes. I thought that was a great transition um in that neighborhood. And I would agree that it's probably a better fit than a marijuana growing facility. Um, but I was really pleased to see the nature of the buildings that they're proposing.
Yeah, I was just going to agree essentially that the um, I think with the residential areas across the street that the um, you know, having having a couple uh multifamily houses, you know. Um, I I think it's just a nice transition between the industrial that's further down the road and and um, and I, you know, again, preserving those wetlands um and, you know, making sure that the uh storm runoff is handled. So it doesn't adversely impact uh the wetlands or the neighbors or any of that. That'll be uh, that'll be key.
And also just that five percent of, five percent or under of the property is being developed. So it's a very small piece on that, um, you know, northwest portion of it. Um, I think, you know, directly across from the other housing, it definitely fits in that area.
Yeah.
A lot and and the topography, it's it's real hard to imagine it being anything else, you know, that's.
Uh, if I may, just one thing, the owner did indicate that they would be ensuring that maintenance is, I mean, you know, done on the facilities and they remain a a positive improvement to the community. Well, that came, that was a question brought up at planning commission, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo that. The development is actually on one corner of this entire parcel and it seems to be away from the marshland. But um if you have not seen the map, I encourage you to look at the packet online to see where that would be located. But um if any further concerns come up, please reach out to our city manager, Derek Perry. And you can find his email address on our website. So um, at this time, I will look to take a motion to approve the conditional rezoning request for sixteen thousand five hundred Division Drive as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Support.
I have motion and support. Could I get roll call, please?
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Hill.
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Cheney Huggett.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, City Manager Perry, were you going to say something else today? I looked your way and I thought maybe you were going to speak and I.
No, I just, we we do have um motions in your packets if you want to consider those, just to make it easier for folks, so.
I didn't see that.
Just part of your, it's part of the administrative report, that's all. I know it's difficult to make a motion as you're, you know, debating an item, so that's why we have those prepared for you. Again, you don't have to use them. We just try to make it easier for you.
Uh, next up, we've got conditional rezoning requests for one, two, three Exchange Street. I would like to recuse myself at this time. I do have um potential financial interest in this property for for uh the future. Um, so I would like to make a motion that we make Scott Wolfersberger to acting chair for ten C. I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Uh, can I get a roll call for that, please? I'm not sure if we need that.
Um, member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Karen. Member Cheney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. You've got the floor, Scott.
Uh, I believe um Eric Zuska is going to brief us on this as well. The next, the zoning issue we have in front of you is the, as mentioned, the conditional zoning of one twenty-three Exchange. This property um has been owned by uh Optima two 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 LLC for a little while. Um, I know Scott Puckett has done, use it for some office space for a little um back and forth after um he lost space out at the uh major campus. So um trying to search really what would be the best fit for that par- parcel. Been doing some historical research, you know, it's been a dance studio, it's been part of a florist, it's been a funeral home storage facility, you know, part of storage cars for the funeral home. That's what I could find. I was enjoyed looking through the Carver that day, um, learned a little more about Marshall. Um, the request on the conditional zoning is to change it from its current B three district to MF RD. Um, I said, okay, um, this is a very similar request to the last one. Um, they're limiting their development to no more than four apartments in there. Construct the building per the plans provided, um, which is no additional to the building. It's all interior plans. And then there is a potential facade on the front, uh, which I think would be a more attractive. Um, the building right now is currently not in the best of shape. Um, and um this investment would be necessary, would definitely improve the neighborhood. Um, the current, the current zoning district, if this was a multi-story building, there'd be no issue. They could go and redevelop and have apartments in it, like many of you, we've done downtown. Um, this is downtown zoning right now. Uh, it's kind of interesting to me looking at it because it's, this block is all B three, but you've got like four houses. You've got Edward Jones building, you've got the G A R museum. Edward Jones building makes great sense, but this kind of a transition to the R three that surrounds it. Um, with the request, uh, there's findings as there aren't all of our rezoning. Uh, we're recommending approval of the set of conditional zoning. Um, I believe it is a good use of the partial we just mentioned. Going back to sixteen, we've needed multiple hundreds of houses and units that we haven't built. Um, so this is a reuse of an infill space, which I think is very valuable, like the last one. Um, so if we had two, three, four home units, this will help the community. The uh, the only issue that I think we've planning commission had with the rezoning request really came down to parking. Um, while it is an issue we consider in a rezoning, it's really a bigger issue in our site plan. Uh, they really need to meet the requirements under site plan uh parking. I will tell you, um, it does meet the requirements. One, with the conditional zoning, um, this is one that we probably, they probably should have put more parking requirements in. The rezoning is saying, hey, this is the order to offer. But with the current zoning ordinance, it does meet it. You need to have three hundred, within three hundred feet, you need to provide the allowed parking. The Brooks Rupture parking lot is a city-owned lot, which the zoning ordinance allows to count for development. So that alone right there, it would be the requirement. Um, obviously, we know people like to park closer where they live, drop things off. They do have opportunities on the site and nearby to potentially partner with their neighbor. Um, and then also on the front, they could um do a redevelopment of the front of the parcel as we were looking at some other sites in town. Um, to meet that parking, I I would not even say requirement, but the desired park locations. Um, I know the other issue that came up was lack of sidewalk in the area. Um, that's something, um, that's on the other side of the street, but not on the east side of um the road there. That being said, we still recommend uh adoption or recommend approval, sorry, on our time right now. Approval of the rezoning, conditional zoning, um, then we would tackle the rest of the issues at site plan.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing regarding the conditional rezoning uh request, R Z number twenty-four oh two for one twenty-three exchange. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, six point two West Green Street. This is another example of the inherent lawlessness of the statutory system uh where you don't have a law that's being followed. You have law that is modified in order to fit a and exigent need, more a want or preference than a need, but uh it has no semblance of coherency when uh you supposedly have a set of ordinances that are supposed to be in place and enforced with a sense of regularity and consistency. But then whenever there's a little vacillation in the economic dynamics of the of the city and somebody wants to redo an existing building for some other purposes, you gotta come back and go through this hoop jumping uh in order to do something that you were probably going to do anyway. Now, you know, when government tries to say that the we're going to uh determine what the best need of a particular uh structural resource is, uh we've already seen that that doesn't work out too well. How many reiterations of uh businesses went through that that particular building? And uh none of them were able to survive. So you need to come back and, you know, rezone and try something else. So uh, a lot of this is about the, you know, the smoke and mirrors of the statutory system that that we have to come up and and beg the superordinate authority in order to do something that the Constitution guarantees that we have the ability to do anyway. So uh, this is something that, uh, you know, it needs to be addressed and recognized in order to fulfill the obligation at uh Article eleven, section one of the Constitution and in MCL fifteen uh point one five one. Uh, there's the Constitution out there. We've got the unlimited right to life, liberty and property, unregulatable. But somehow it's degenerated into this uh statutory system where everybody has to come up and and beg you people in order to just try to do what they want to do best for themselves. You know, I I I don't think the need for oversight and regulation is that great of a need when people, when given the opportunity, will follow their own interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anybody else wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Uh, City Council, any discussion, questions?
Um, I've uh seen the property. It's definitely in uh need of rehabilitation. And then this obviously goes towards one of our goals that were mentioned earlier. Um, you know, as far as parking, I understand that that's a tough uh thing for this parcel. But um if they are able to do something in the front or along the side of the building, that seems like it would fit. Um, and there's also the city lots across the street, which a lot of downtown businesses use for overnight parking. So feel that it is a good use of of this, you know, space that hasn't been utilized in a long time.
Yeah, my questions go along with the parking. If if there's any restrictions, current zoning restrictions or other city street restrictions that would prohibit them from creating those parking spaces there, if that became part of their plan?
The the parcel that's called out on the map to the north is, I believe, one is the historical society. So that's something they would have to work out. That's where we're unclear. That is on the applicant to go through on that parcel and see what's their property, what right they have to it. In front of it, um, they're potentially, depending on how they lay out the parking, could be in the right of way. Um, we have looked at right of way licensing before on projects. Um, so that's something that is possible.
But this would be a special request if they did.
Yeah, well, it would be, yes, it would be a request that we would consider as we've done before. Um, and then um, but as I think um Councilmember Karen mentioned, I did the the parking in the uh city parking lot is sufficient to meet the needs.
Are there any designated overnight parking spots in that parking lot? Okay.
And I think that's honestly is more of downtown develops. I think that's something you're going to continuously look at. Um, as, you know, where do those spots need to be? Um, and I and I think staff's well aware of that, I think. Chief Lankard has done that multiple times since he's been chief.
Yeah, I um, I mean, we talked about the unique nature of this view of this building, you know, in this district. Um, you know, it really doesn't fit with the nature of the downtown buildings. But uh the parking and or um safe passage to the uh lots across the street. I can't say I feel like either one of those have been addressed here. Um, the, if we put, if we allow the angle parking in front, that precludes us from putting in a sidewalk. Um, and if we put in a sidewalk, then there's no parking out front. So um, I I guess I'm I'm just not seeing a a clear plan. Are there, does, I mean, I realize that G I S lines are not to be relied on. Um, but is there a belief that there's um property rights in the alley?
It's been mentioned by Mr. Bucket. Um, however, I I I haven't seen it. Um, I think city managers looked into a little bit, but that's additional work that will need to be done. And um some of these issues are site plan related issues. I mean, they're really issues that do need to be looked at during site plan. They need to prove that they have the ability to um have the parking for their property. Honestly, no matter what goes in there right now, there's no parking on the property. Um, so if you had somebody commercially go in, they're parking across the street or um somewhere else to get to the partial. I I think the issue over a sidewalk versus parking is something we can definitely look into as we wo- work with the applicant on site plan. Um, but right now, I don't have a perfect answer for you. Um, but I do know that there's also, Os Street Parking is right now prohibited two to six. Um, so that's overnight, they couldn't park in front of the building.
One of the questions we need to address during the site plan is the actual, I guess, um, ownership of that alley. Even though it exists, we're not sure if there's an underlying easement to that or not, because it's really not. It doesn't show up on G I S as a public alley. Um, but one, I think, one of the options that I think is uh that exists potentially is to work with the historical society and their museum. They they do seem to have a large um grass backyard. And perhaps there's an opportunity for the property owner and the museum to partner together on some some public parking there or that would benefit both, both facilities essentially, so.
So am I hearing it correctly that one way or another, there is walking difficulties and in cross crossroad walking issues, whether or not it goes through. No matter what the use of that building, there's there's parking and walking, safe transportation or safe walking back and forth from that property.
Correct. So if there was a, you know, if we were not, if this was not before you tonight and there was a use by right that went in that building, obviously those existing, um, you know, difficulties still exist. What we're saying is they do check the box on parking because they're within so many feet of the public parking lot. However, it's it's clear that we would like to see some pedestrian enhancements to that. Uh, and one of those things would be the sidewalk. So through the site plan process, that's where we need to work with the applicant to say, how can we facilitate that sidewalk? Um, again, with that potentially angle parking, does that? Um, again, with that potentially angle parking, does that preclude a sidewalk? Then that's probably the city's, not our number one option, right? Um, again, because we have to find out who controls that alley. Again, is it just been a use by kind of historical use? Um, is, or does someone actually have a controlling underlying easement to that? Um, or does the property owner, the applicant actually have control of a certain footage off of the building that they, again, could use by right to park on basically under our existing ordinances. So there are some additional questions that need to be answered, no doubt about it. Um, but again, a lot of those will be, you know, vetted as part of the site plan process. What's before you tonight is this conditional rezoning request. And again, they do check the box on the parking.
And with the site plan, it's not just, um, you know, Tim and I looking at it, it's all the city departments. It's water, it's sewer, it's public works, fiber net, electric. We all sit down and talk through these issues. Um, so, you know, if we look at it as they say, hey, we're gonna depend on the lots for parking. Then I know Public Works is gonna probably say, we wanna sidewalk through here. So it's easily better to access for all. Um, so those issues we, we do take into account.
I'd say obviously the, the parking question is something to be discussed, but I, I do think that aside that it's a good um, use and reuse of that building. I think that the use makes sense for that location there, that kind of transition between commercial and residential. Um, and there's just a lot of need for apartments. And so I think that's good. I think it increases our density downtown, which will help downtown businesses. So I think it makes sense.
Couldn't be expecting a lot on that site plan review.
I already did, Scott.
Thank you. Uh, any additional comments or questions by council? No. Uh, seeing none, I will seek, uh, a motion to enact ordinance number two zero two four dash one one. An ordinance to amend the city, the zoning map of the city of Marshall so as to conditionally change the zoning of parcel number five three dash zero zero one dash zero five nine dash zero five one twenty three Exchange Street. Uh, neighborhood commercial district B three to multiple family residential district MFRD and publish the ordinance in full in the local newspaper.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Uh, Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Member Cheney, hug it. No. Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfers Burger.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will return the gavel to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Scott. That brings us to ten D Oprah exemption request for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue Director Zuzka.
This is my last public hearing for tonight. I do apologize for so many. Uh, but I will say at one point we had six, so. In front of you is a request from, um, one seventeen East Michigan Avenue for an Oprah exemption. You've already approved the district at a previous meeting. So now you're considering the, uh, request for the actual exemption. For our policy, this investment, uh, is eligible up to an eight-year Oprah, which is what they are requesting. Um, remember the obsolete property rehabilitation act allows this exemption or allows this incentive for people to invest in their buildings and help really improve downtown. And I think we've used it well. Um, we've seen a lot of buildings invested in, uh, people living in them, businesses working out of them. So I think that's one of the very positive things. With this request, uh, we're, we're just asking you approve resolution twenty four dash nineteen, um, to prove the eight-year OPRA exemption.
Thank you. I'll, the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are you still Barry Wayne Adams?
As of now, yes.
All right.
Again, you know, the having to come and ask for an exemption for something which is readily given. I mean, I'm sure there's not gonna be any real, uh, resistance against doing this, but do we actually need to go through these uh, pseudo legalistic rituals, uh, such as, uh, you know, the passing of an ordinance. Uh, now, aren't ordinances supposed to be about things that have a, uh, potential punishment? So I don't even know, you know, the, the classifications of, of resolution and ordinance, uh, uh, even apply to telling someone how to use their property. There are so many instances that show the inconsistency of, uh, the illusion of consistent government. Uh, and, you know, so you gotta run back and forth between these categorizations of residential or industrial or whatever other zoning category. Whereas, you know, people, if given the opportunity to follow their own interests, will uh, try to do the best with what they've got. And it's only because of extenuating burdens that might come from excessive regulation that keep people from being as successful economically that they, that they, uh, potentially could be. So, uh, you know, it's there's a certain reinforcement in being able to say that, you know, there's some sort of authority controlling all this stuff, but uh, it's really comes down to flying by the seat of your pants and uh, who knows what's gonna come up at the next meeting and, uh, we'll just have to rule on that then. So, uh, again, it's, it's hard to try to resonate a deep research into what the constitutional forms of this government are supposed to be and what we're actually seeing in the real world. Uh, but we're gonna make that effort to reconcile that. I'll be back.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this Oprah exemption request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. City Council, any comments or questions?
Well, I've said many times that I appreciate, um, the millions of dollars in investment that we've seen in our downtown, uh, recently and, uh, I would like to continue seeing more of it. So I appreciate, uh, seeing this utilized.
I would agree with that. Um, at this point I will take a motion. If anybody has the language in front of them, I would love you to read that. I do not.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash nineteen, a resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue.
Support.
I have a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Game sign? Actually, I believe I need a roll call. Um, Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Member Gates. Member Weber.
Yes.
For Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfers Burger.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Cheney, hug it.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, next brings us to twelve A. Report some recommendations for setting construction board of appeals meeting for one oh seven North Fountain Street Dangerous Building. Uh, Clerk, if you give us a report on that, please.
Um, one oh seven North Fountain suffered severe fire damage back in the fall. Um, no one has come forward to take control of the property and to take, to remedy that. Um, a hearing was held on June twenty seventh with the appointed dangerous building official, which you guys appointed earlier this spring. Um, he has released an order that gave them ten days in which to make progress towards tearing it down. Nothing has been done until this point. Um, and within that order, it also stated that with no less than thirty days, we needed to schedule an appeals hearing, um, which is what we are asking you to do with the construction board of appeals. Um, as that is the board that is set forward to do this. Um, we are looking for a hearing for Thursday, August eighth at five P M. Attorney Revor is here if you have any additional questions.
I'll move, uh, to receive the hearing officer's decision, findings and order and set a construction board of appeals meeting for Thursday, August eighth, twenty twenty four at five P M.
Second.
That motion is second. Just for the record, the location of that, is that here?
Uh, yes, that would be here.
Um, I have motion support, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, B, we have a FOIA fee appeal request from Mr. Glenn Kowalski, FOIA number two thousand twenty four dash one one four. Clerk, if you could give us an update on that one as well.
So that FOIA request, um, was for all records essentially that we have pertaining to all four twenty five agreements that we have ever made with Marshall Township. Um, he is looking for all records related to four twenty five agreements from the treasurer's office, all records relating to them from the clerk's office, which in is the individual contracts within our assessing department and maps within the GIS department. We retook the request. I gave it to the individual departments who gave a estimate on how much time it would cost to compile all of that. Um, as with, uh, just the individual contracts, you've got to imagine there are quite a number of them. Um, same with finances, looking at, it's not one single report. They're going to have to try to find these things. Um, same with assessing, it is not just a readily available document, um, as it is seen to be leave. Um, you can see in your packet, the time estimate that was estimated from each department. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions or comments from council? So looking at Mr. Kowalski's emails seeking this appeal. And maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but it sure seems like he's changed his request to something that would involve creating a new document?
So Mr. Kowalski sent one recorder, appeal for both of his, um, appeals tonight, um, was the information he got. Um, as far as I'm aware of, none of this would be a creation of a new document. It would just be compiling numerous things, um, from the individual departments. Um, because FOIA does not require us to compile or create a new document.
Right. That's, I guess that's where I was trying to understand. Cause it, it doesn't, I mean, no individual, there wouldn't be anything that had all the doc, you know, any, any monies transferred, they'd each be individual transactions. So it, it anything that's compiled with all of them would seem to be a new document to me.
I believe you're referencing the second FOIA appeal. The first one's in relation to the P A four twenty five transfer.
Right.
Where he was advised that we do maintain those records. The treasurer's office has some records. You know, the clerk's office has records, our assessing, engineering department has records. And again, they're available to the public. We'll be more than glad to pull those records, but there's an impact. There's a cost to do that.
Right.
And essentially it's an estimate we provide individuals that FOI us. And if they're, you know, um, again, if they'll pay the deposit, we'll pull the records and provide those records to them as required under FOIA. Uh, again, and it's an estimate. So if it takes us less time, they'll be charged less.
Well, and I guess I, I actually was a little surprised that it wasn't, you know, considering this is pulling documents from multiple departments. I was actually surprised that it wasn't more, so.
I think there's a perception that all our records are on one bookshelf, right? And, and, and single binders and some of our things are. Again, if someone wants to see the municipal budget document, I have that on my desk. It's readily available. They wanna come in, we will provide that. We'll provide them the conference room. They're welcome to look through that. Again, they wanna look at city ordinances. Actually, they're all available online, but we also have a book for that. Again, readily available, pull it right off the shelf. However, there are some documents that are compiled and stored in different areas and different departments. And again, we will comply, we will provide those documents, but they do take time by our staff and it's an opportunity cost. And FOIA allows us to recoup some of those costs. And that's all we're asking for in this.
Yeah, thank you.
I actually had the same reaction. I thought it was, uh, actually kind of a reasonable amount of money for the amount of work that it would take to compile that information. So I, I do think we need to continue to be as transparent as possible for, for folks, but there's a cost associated, so.
The last comment I would have is under the FOIA, um, regulation, you have basically four options. When someone, uh, makes their appeal, one is a waive the appeal. You have that right as, uh, city council. Two, reduce the fee and issue a written determination. Uh, three, uphold the fee and issue a written determination. And the four one, uh, is actually doing an extension for ten days. So those are your four options that you have under the state statute.
Yeah, we have a process in place and a policy in place and, um, with no reason why we should stray from that in this request, but I would seek a recommendation to uphold the fee as was given to Mr. Kowalski.
So moved.
Yes, I think we're just doing the one right now. I mean.
FOIA, FOIA request number twenty twenty four dash one fourteen.
Correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign? Motion passes. That'll move us to FOIA fee, appeal request from Mr. Glenn Kowalski, FOIA number two zero two four dash one one five. Um, I think the same argument stands and I would, uh, seek a motion that we uphold the fees as presented to Mr. Kowalski for the FOIA number two zero two four dash one one five.
So moved.
Supports.
Motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That moves us down to public comment on non-agend items. Please give your name and rec, address for the record and you have two minutes to speak. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Rick Newcomb, I'm from Battle Creek, Michigan. Um, one of the things I wanted to bring up was there's an awful lot of things going on. This is an awful small community. There's a lot of small communities around the country. And we're being taken over by Communist China. And one city at a time. And the interesting thing about this, this isn't really political. It's about our freedom. It's about the American way. It's about living here and, and actually living the dream of our freedoms. So what I was gonna bring up here was the idea that, um, there's a, there's an act, that's the Ukraine supplemental appropriations act twenty twenty three. There is also one in twenty twenty two and also one in twenty twenty four. What they did in twenty twenty three, they approved, um, forty seven, uh, billion dollars. But what they did, they're not real transparent. You guys try to be transparent. These people aren't being transparent. What they're doing is they're taking appropriations that's appropriated towards Ukraine. And they're sending it to, um, Idaho. Fifteen million dollars of this appropriations money approved by the Congress went to a small company to, uh, so they could, uh, uh, mine cobalt. Now in Idaho, they're a farming community.
Now, in Idaho, they're a farming community. There's a drought there and they shut off water to five hundred thousand acres of farmland. And the very next month approved this company to mine cobalt twenty-four, seven. Now, this is going to cause famine. And my question is, how long is it going to take for those kinds of things to work into another small community like ours? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Klinger?
Yes, Regis Klinger, three, four, eight Butler Court, Marshall, Michigan. I noticed in the second quarter annual report that there was a number of five-year plans being started or worked on. One being the city master plan, the parks recreation plan and non-motorized master plan. So the master plan was a good start having a survey from the community. And I think it's a good start, but it's only a start. You can't just do a survey and say that's a public input. You need to have focus groups. You need to have the response to that survey, what was included and what was not included. And you need to have committee meetings where people can have their input put in all along the process. I don't know if there are specific committees set up for these master plans. I think some of them are. I think there was a small business one was completed, but there has to be more public input. And I hope you will take into account that you all I study and look at what they've recommended. There's a lot more steps to community input than just a survey. That's a start, but it's not enough. So there should be public input all the way through these uh, master plan for uh, recreation, for non-motorized master plan. Also, I see there's a uh, meeting to meet to meet with M A D A and M dot and for the development of the remaining land on the major campus. Again, public input there would be very nice to have. It should be done. I think people would put would put in their input if they had a chance to do that. The other thing kind of related to that is the Bear Creek uh, making it into historical recreation area, which is great. I just have some questions on that. Who is going to own that? Who's going to maintain it? Is the zoning proper for that? And is that going to be proper? And is that property going to be transferred to the city or not? Some things to think about for that property.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebring Fredonia Township. I want to talk about the Fiesta of the fifties and the cruise to the fountain, the original car shows. Did you know they started in nineteen eighty-five? I have myself have been going for twenty-eight years. I've been in the circuit that long. This, the Fiesta of the fifty cruise to the fountain is thirty-eight years old. Now, I remember the year when the Blues Fest came in. It was two thousand and six. Man, that was an awesome night. I think it went on till midnight. It was awesome. And you had real blues back then, not unlike nowadays. And that's only eighteen years. We have asked you a million times. You used to give us the downtown to cruise for at least an hour. Why is the Blues Fest grandfathered in? And the car show is not. We have a twenty more years of bringing money to Marshall. It used to be a big money bringer for you guys. But you're going to give the downtown to the Blues Fest and not to the original car show, not the new one put on by the meta. Um, anyways, this is not fair. We brought a lot of money to town and you want nine thousand dollars to close down the road for an hour and a half or so, so we can cruise the gut and bring you more money? When we have to pay for the show, can we reassess that? Can I put in a request to reassess that and think about what history of thirty-eight years of this car show? And how much money and time and how much fun and how all the people come from all around? Just to come and see the show, let alone, we can't afford the five thousand dollars for the uh, fireworks. And now you want nine thousand dollars? I want you guys to reassess that. Your Blues Fest is only eighteen years old and the car show is thirty-eight years old. Whether it was Fiesta of the fifties or Cruise to the Fountain, we brought you a lot of money. Reassess it, please.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else? Mr. Adams.
Last time. Barry Wayne Adams, six point two West Green Street. Uh, went to the Emmett Township meeting last week and it was amazing to see actual an actual democratic dynamic in operation. Uh, there was an actual meaningful interchange between the audience and the council members. Questions were and were asked, council members answered. Council members actually listened to the members in the audience and based their decision, their their voting on the input from the audience. That's the way it's supposed to work. Article one, section one. People have the political power. Article one, section three, we're here to instruct you. Instruct our public servants as to how they are to operate. And that doesn't seem to be happening in this uh, city and it's kind of unfortunate. There seems to be a a real lapse in uh, wanting to conform to the mandates of Article eleven, section one, upholding the constitution and uh, because of that, uh, there seems to be a need to have an exchange of personalities on the council. So because of that, uh, I have chosen to throw my hat in the ring for mayor. I've already got the uh, signatures in and my affidavit of identity. We corrected the defect in the affidavit of identity, so should be good to go. Uh, and uh, during the petition signature gathering process, I've learned some very interesting things.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anybody else like to speak? On non-agenda items. Hearing none, moves us on to council and manager communications, Mr. Gates.
I would just like to say regarding the city master planning process, uh, there is, I know, a lot of more outreach planned. Um, I know they're going to have tents at some uh, public events that are going to be coming up and um, other groups and things like that will will be taking place. So keep an eye out. Um, I'm sure it'll be on the city's social media and 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 other places. Uh, probably in the newspaper as well, uh, and and at public events for opportunities uh, to share input. So thanks for your interest in it.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill.
Visit we conduct downtown and the airport. We have the flying on Saturday. It's on the, it's on the website. And um, the market on Main and the duck puck all on Saturday in Marshall. That's it.
Good weekend. Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Uh, last Tuesday, I attended the consolidated dispatch authority board meeting. Um, we uh, were went over the audit report. It was presented by the auditor. We also approved an agreement with the city of Battle Creek for transfer of ownership of their fire department radios. So pretty light agenda, but um, good things happening on that board.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfers Burger.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
This is Chaney Huggett.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
City manager Perry.
Uh, just a quick reminder that there's a lot of construction that's starting now. Um, the activation zone phase two, the parking lot between Schuler's and the library that was milled today, the parking lot east of South Jefferson. Um, I don't know if that got milled yet today or not, but they were in the process of doing that. So again, it's that time of year where we're going to be inconveniencing folks with detours and traffic cones. So we just request your patience as we do these improvements in the community. Uh, for those that would like to be in the know as soon as possible, we do do updates. If you go to the city's website, you can actually sign up for construction notices. Um, you just basically create an account, figure out, figure out which of these projects you'd like to be updated on. And again, when we do those updates, you automatically get an email pushed out to you. So I'd encourage folks to do that. Um, also, South Marshall by the powerhouse, we are going to be receiving a a new generator and tomorrow and Wednesday, there'll be some flagging work done. So uh, they got to bring in a large crane to set that. So again, just be aware that there may be some inconvenience on South Marshall over the next couple of days. And then finally, obviously, the South Grand, the First Baptist Church is doing some construction work on their building. So to accommodate that, we closed the street and we just, again, we want, we encourage folks to do improvements to their buildings and their homes. And sometimes they have to use, you know, public right away to do that. And again, we do allow that as a process. And again, it does create inconvenience, but again, there'll probably be a come a time where your home or business will need that accommodation. So we just again, ask for continued patience as we again, improve the community for all our residents and visitors. That's it.
Thank you. Clerk Eubank.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm excited about that uh, special project behind Green Street between Jefferson and Eagle. Um, the work did begin today and I think it'll be much better when it's completed. So I'm excited about that. Do we have a timeline for completion?
Final schedule has everything buttoned up in October, so it's going to be uh, yeah, a mess for a while.
Yeah. All right. With that, thank you, everybody for attending and this meeting is adjourned.